Motion.
I'll.
Second, Aaron.
Okay. Okay. Since the recording started, I'll just repeat what you motioned in second and I had asked for a motion to approve and accept the agenda with an amendment to the personnel report. We had a motion and a second. All in, any questions?
Are the.
Okay.
Any question?
The agenda item?
When we have a, do you have any questions about the amended agenda? Before we approve the agenda?
I don't know what the amended agenda is. I didn't get that.
Um, it's the same.
It was just a personnel report that was sent out that was emailed earlier today. There was like a name added to the personnel report.
Okay, I have that.
Yep. It wasn't the, itself, I'm sorry. It was the personnel report.
He has some questions about the personnel report itself. So when we get there, but this is just to approve the agenda at this point with the amendment to the personnel report. No problem.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Alrighty, we'll do the pledge allegiance remotely. Jennifer's got it there. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America and to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice.
And justice. Thank you. Um, no recognition. I have no communication from the public. Consent agenda was the personnel report. Um, we'll go with, um, do I have a motion to approve and accept this consent agenda item as recommended? After a motion and second, we'll have a time for any questions on that if anyone has them.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, um, questions on the personnel report that we are meeting to deal with tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
That Jim?
Yep, Jim has, Jim has a couple of questions.
Okay.
First question is, did, um, someone give me or Dr. Kimston give me, um, summary of the process for searching for Ankeny Centennial High School Principalship? How that went, the process?
We had three candidates for Ankeny Centennial. Uh, and as finalist and went through a process of multiple committees. And it was a consensus of the committees to be able to make a recommendation to a can, for a candidate. Uh, we had discussion with the candidate. It was after that point that the district in which the candidate was employed indicated that while the state of Iowa would find no ethical dilemma or challenge since it was this early. Um, the board, according to the candidate and the superintendent had indicated that they would not let him out. And so, um, what that means, Director Ford, is that, um, we, he would be unable to work um, in any Iowa school for the next year. He was very apologetic. Um, I said that I didn't see it as his issue. Um, but more of a conversation that he and his administration had had and evidently, um, there, they did not agree. And, um, he very much wanted to work in Ankeny. So it being that late of date, we went to Plan B. We did not bring in any of the other candidates. And spoke to the person before you on the amended personnel memorandum. And this person has agreed to accept it for one year as well as keep the duties that she currently has. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, um, another question is, do superintendents in the summer typically talk to the superintendent of the candidates that are intervening to see if they're going to be released out of their contract prior to taking the time to interview them?
I spoke to the superintendent. And I would just say that, uh, he asked if the candidate had indicated that he was not going to let him out. And I would, I would just say that that's where the stories are different. Um, I have let people out in as late as August. Um, but every superintendent, that is up to them and that's up to their board. So I'm not speaking on anything other than, um, the candidate and what the superintendent had said, I did not get the same message.
Okay. Um, what advertising outlet sources, services did we use for this position?
I would defer to Director Dirks.
Yeah, so for Centennial, um, we posted, um, in a national publication as well in Education Week. And Jody, I believe you're on the line, so feel free to chime in if there are others that I am not remembering as well as on the state's website, uh, and on the district website. So we had a national, a state, and a local outreach on a pretty quick timeline.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, um, my understanding is that we interviewed three people from Central Iowa, so we didn't really have a big net as far as anyone outside of the state of Iowa. Would I be correct on that?
That's right. That's right. I, I do think, um, you know, the benefit of having, uh, having the person whose name is before you tonight for one year, a person who is interested in sort of going back to a previous role at the end, gives us an entire year to really think about a robust national search for that role. Um, we have heard you all say that that is a priority. It's a priority for our team. I think the good news is hopefully there will be fewer transitions on, on the human resources team now. And we can start very early with a, a robust national search, uh, for that role, um, you know, in, in the current situation. But you're correct. We had three candidates from Iowa, um, so we didn't yield a lot from that national search. I think we can do better the next time around.
Jim, this is Jody. I would just add in, I did speak with a national search firm and, um, looked at getting a quote from them regarding their process. They shared with me that, um, since the pandemic, they have seen a, a significant decrease in candidates, um, for two reasons. One is, um, administrators are just expressing a loyalty to the districts in which they're working and students are serving and just feel that this isn't the time for them to move. The second, um, thing that they were seeing with candidates is just, um, a fear of picking their family up and moving them across the country. So that particular search firm, um, had said that they had only been able to make one search, one successful search, um, from March to, um, May, and that was in Alaska. And so I think, um, to Jesse's point, us being able to take a year, get through some of the uncertainty with the pandemic will be positioned well to be able to go out for a national search this next year.
And, oh, that totally makes sense to me. So I can see where it'd be a lot harder for people to pick up and move in this, uh, state of affairs. Um, what stakeholder groups were involved in this process?
I can speak to that. Um, we had a teacher committee. That teacher committee was led by Dr. Lindeman. We had an administrative committee that was comprised of, um, building administration as well as academic services. I led that committee. Um, the superintendent's executive cabinet served as a committee together. We had a parent committee and one of the APs at Centennial facilitated that group. That was via Zoom. And then Dr. Kimston met one-on-one. We also had a writing, um, activity prior to the interview that each of the three finalists turned in, um, as well.
Okay, thanks. Um, you know, the only frustration I have about this whole thing is, you know, a year ago, we, we had, um, one of our, um, directors have to be a principal and be a director for a year. And now we're doing that again where we're having, um, someone be a director, or be a principal and do their other job. And so that's two years in a row that we've, uh, put ourselves in that position. And that, to me, is kind of a disservice for the students, the staff, and the parents. It's really kind of put that building a little bit on hold. Even though we're going to put a quality person in that spot, um, it's just kind of a, uh, it just doesn't seem like, uh, the timing and everything just is kind of a mess. And that's frustrating to me as a director.
I'll, I'll share one other piece of information that may help, um, Jim. We've been in close contact with the teachers at Centennial primarily through the teachers' union and talked about interim solution. And I would just share with you that they were very supportive and felt better with an interim solution than us rushing to make any type of permanent hiring decision. Um, for what that's worth, I just offer that as additional information.
That's, that's a good thing though, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, and can someone tell me, Bruce maybe, uh, just about the process for filling the, uh, position of director of secondary ed and how that process went and the advertising, stakeholders, all the same questions I had for the previous position?
The structure for what, Jim? Like, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. For the secondary, uh, director of secondary ed position, um, that we have on the agenda tonight, can someone talk to me about the process of, uh, you know, advertising, candidate pool, uh, reference text, you know, stakeholder groups, all of that stuff?
Um, that was one where, uh, they had reviewed the candidates, um, and the internal candidate um, that was put forth was, um, significantly stronger than the external candidate. And, um, so, uh, it was to the point, and, um, Jessica and Jody, uh, jump in if I'm to speak, to the point of them not being able, and I have not heard this in the 10 or 11 years I've been here, not to be able to list one thing that this candidate, one question that they would have about this candidate's ability to fill this position. And I, quite frankly, have never heard anybody uh, not have one question about this person. Uh, they are that confident, uh, and, um, her ability.
And Justin.
Who is that? Who is that day that looked at this?
Sure. So there was a cross stakeholder group of, um, teachers, administrators. Jody facilitated that group. Um, and will be able to tell me if I'm forgetting anyone here. Uh, central office folks, um, I believe Ken was in the committee. So a real cross-section, uh, of people that asked this, um, this candidate to prepare a 90-day plan, present that to the group. Um, and then had an opportunity to debrief after. And it's in that sort of debrief, uh, process with that cross stakeholder group, um, that Bruce is referencing, uh, where there were no questions about this candidate's readiness and ability to be successful in this role. So, um, a large group of those.
And the bottom, so the bottom line is, we just visited with one person for this position?
Yeah, so it was posted, um, using our standard, uh, sort of local and state mechanisms for, for posting. Um, you know, as we were trying to make the determination about, uh, who would move forward to the interview process. Um, folks from academic services and human resources took a look at the caliber of candidates. And ultimately, I think what we try to do in every situation is say, who are the people that we would really be, based on the information we have available to us now, we think have what it takes to be successful in this role? We're comfortable enough that if this interview group went a different direction than maybe the direction we think they might go, we're not going to have reservations, um, about that decision. And there was one person at the top of a candidate pool, um, that we really had that level of confidence in, and we wanted to advance, uh, advance in that process in that way. Um, we did have some candidates, and Jody might be able to give you more specifics here, um, candidates who had applied for other roles in the district previously and, um, you know, had, we didn't, had not been successful in that process. So, um, it was not a huge group, but there was one person who was, who was clearly, um, the most qualified in that pool.
And again, I would echo the same thing. Um, I know the person that we're putting in, and I think that person's an outstanding person. I'm just was talking about process because we've had conversations about hiring processes. So I'm trying to make sure that we're actually, uh, doing the things that we've talked about doing so that, um, you know, we're doing our due diligence, uh, for all of our kids, staff, parents, the whole bit.
Yeah.
So my next, my next question for all of you is, um, what's the process going to be for filling Northview Middle School Principal Position? What's?
I can speak to that, Jim. Um, and I'll, I'll fill in a few, uh, other details that might be helpful to know, or just things I would want to know if I were in your seat as well. Um, when those administrator app, um, requisitions go live into postings, I comb through every single application looking at their resume, credentials, references, et cetera. As soon as a candidate hits submit, it, uh, the system automatically sends out reference surveys. I also generally call references prior to the final interview, um, piece as well. So those are things that we're kind of doing in place. Um, this time of year, I am also asking candidates about their contract. Are they under contract? Um, can they get out of their contract? Um, so
Yes, Jim.
Knowing our, kind of what we had in our pool for the director position, I had anticipated we'd find ourselves in this situation. So a week ago, I posted an anticipated secondary principal position to start building a candidate pool and to give us a little bit of an opportunity to get, um, some advertising out and underway. We, we had a, this year, for whatever reason, we tend to have had stronger secondary pools and elementary pools. Um, so we have, I've been able to contact three candidates who we will bring in for interviews on Thursday for the Northview position. Um, those candidates will go through a process that will include and very much mirror the process we used at Centennial. It will be a parent group. It will be a staff group, a committee, or I'm sorry, a, um, an administrative committee cabinet. They'll have a one-on-one, et cetera. Um, I have been in touch with all of those candidates throughout the week just to make sure. And having learned from our last situation, I have, um, been asking to get in writing that they would be able to get out of their contract. So just doing all of those type of things behind the scene to really set us up to be able to, um, potentially offer a position and bring that name to you, um, on Monday, the 6th, hopefully.
There is one change that is different from all the other positions, and that is it was July. And if you look at Iowa's rules, um, July on, uh, administrators should not be recruiting other candidates from other schools. And so this is where the ethics violations come in. And so I would say that, um, it makes it more challenging after July 1, where you can really go after somebody and recruit them and, you know, make the calls and, and visit with them and, you know, get them into town and, and all of the things you want to do. But in July, basically, your hands off unless they make the contact. And then you still need to be very careful, um, uh, what you say and also that, um, I want to make sure that they can get out of their contract because I don't want another superintendent, um, believing that I'm trying to take candidates after July.
Oh, I totally get all that. So that's what I'm worried about. You know, I'm worried about, um, and I appreciate what, uh, Jody shared as far as, uh, the people we're bringing in uh, have all been told they could get out of contract. Correct, Jody?
Correct. And, um, I did, I have advised them to get that in writing. Um, one of the candidates yeah, sent that to me today. The other thing that I, I, I would share, because I think this is, um, something that we've done a really good job of this year, is I've really been going through those pools and doing some recruiting within the pools to be able to try to get the best candidate in a really good position that they're still set. We've been able to do that with, um, a couple of our positions. Um, so for example, we had a candidate who applied for an AP position early in the year. Um, didn't have a lot of experience as an administrator, but had a lot of potential. So I kept in touch with him for a couple of weeks. Um, led him to apply to the SBSS role. He ended up being a top candidate in that. We also did that, um, with the Rock Creek, um, principal position, Jim. Um, that particular candidate interviewed for a director position, um, and really in talking with her and kind of analyzing skillset to the needs of the jobs, really found out that a building principal was the best match for her. What's great about that and what's a really big celebration is that those candidates are going through multiple stakeholder groups and really getting a lot of buy-in from those groups, which really means the depth and breadth of their interaction with stakeholders is even greater, um, which I think is a really great thing for our system in getting that much input from our candidates.
Well, that leads me to my last of the question. Um, to talk to me about the Rock Creek Principal Position and that whole process because my understanding is we interviewed one person and I've gotten feedback from parents and staff that didn't feel like they were given the opportunity to really talk to other candidates and were disappointed in the process and reached out to me. I didn't reach out to them. They reached out to me and wanted me to speak for them as far as, they didn't feel like the process was followed. So that's a frustration that I'm just sharing from our public.
Yeah, so I could speak to that as well. So the process, so that, um, that pool was, um, not as, as robust as one might hope. And I think there's a lot of, um, reasons why. I think the time of year played a big role into that. A lot of people are under contract right now. Um, I would say over half to three-fourths of that pool had candidates that had no principal experience in the pool. So given that we had, um, a candidate who threw multiple other stakeholder pieces in a different interview, including teachers, union members, administrators, um, felt extremely strongly about that candidate needing to be in our district. Um, she is as qualified of a candidate as I have seen, um, in my experience hiring for a building administrative position. Her references are like none other. They are the most outstanding references that I have talked to. Um, there was no one else in the pool that stacked up to her level of experience. And one of the things that I said to, um, the group when we debriefed, I, I will own, Jim, that we have given the perception that, um, we've, we've, um, we lack clarity in roles of stakeholders in the interview. So the interview process is meant to gain input, not be choice makers. Um, in this case, I think there was a perception that they were making the ultimate choice, and that's not the role of those stakeholder groups because there's a lot of different pieces and parts in the interview process. And so it's clear to me and our HR department that we need to do some work on roles and responsibilities within that interview process. And, um, it's interesting that you've had parents reach out to you because Ken and Jesse ran the parent group, and that would not be the perception that they brought back to our, um, debriefing committee. They brought back, um, a, a completely different, um, feeling. Uh, and Jesse can speak to that. She was with that group. Um, so I, I'm saddened to hear that because that's not their perception I would have had, um, from that parent group.
Yeah, the only thing that people brought to my attention is they'd sound like when you interview one person versus multiple people, then why did you even involve them in the process? That's the feedback I got.
Yeah, I, I'll say, um, Jim, that, you know, it, it is important to us that, um, that parents have a real authentic voice, that staff have a real authentic voice in the process. If we had walked out of that interview, having heard from those stakeholder groups that they had strong concerns, strong objections, I think we would have had to go back to the drawing board and come up with a Plan B. Um, that is not what we heard. Um, and, and I think hearing, you know, uh, strong positive reactions sort of overwhelmingly from, from the groups that were gathered. Some people did ask, um, you know, about the size of the applicant pool, which I think is a, is a, it's a fair question to ask. Um, but if we had had a very different reaction, um, from those groups with that candidate, I think we would have gone back to the drawing board. And that's the point of involving them, right? Not to give them ultimately veto power, but to make sure that their voices are heard, they had positive reactions. And so we, um, we felt confident moving forward with that decision for the strong candidate.
Sure. And then, you know, I used to be in the business and I totally understand stakeholders for jobs. And of course, ultimately, that feedback, feedback is just used to gauge, um, the decision-making, but they're not making the decision. I know and I understand that. I appreciate that. So, and I'm, you know, I just am telling you the feedback I got, and I didn't call them. They called me, so I'm just telling you.
Yeah, we appreciate hearing that.
Yeah, the other thing I would just share that I think is important to know, Jim, is that, um, there was another teacher group that consisted of district, um, or not district, but teacher leaders, ILT, um, instructional coaches, the DLT teachers that serve on the kind of advisory committee for, um, academic services. The, the feedback from that teacher group was very different, um, than I think what you're hearing. So I, I would just want you to have confidence that there was a lot of teacher voice, um, and a lot of teacher input within the process. So I, I would just want you to have confidence that there was a lot of teacher voice, um, and a lot of teacher input within the process.
I have a question.
Done with my questions.
What did you say, Jim?
I'm, I'm done with my questions.
Okay. You all mentioned that, um, our equity director led the parent group. I'm wondering if he had a role in, um, or was involved in the hiring process or any of the interviewing process. For all of those recently hired candidates. And if so, what role did he play?
I can speak to that, Deshara. Ken has been serving predominantly on our administrative team, um, interview. He has, he was in the director of elementary. He was on Centennial. Um, he was not able to be in the director of secondary. He had another appointment. Um, and then he, we are working to transition him to more of a facilitator, um, going into year two. So he, um, facilitated the parent group at Rock Creek and will facilitate the parent group at Northview.
And for, I would just add to that, some, uh, additional sort of administrative level positions or director of safety and security, for example. Ken has played a lead role, um, in working closely with Darren on staffing for that, which is ongoing this week. Um, so he's been a part of those interviews and has been a part of the, the discussion and the process leading up to. Um, the selection of the right person for that role.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm wondering, um. I'm wondering if he has been used as a resource at all to help us figure out, um, different ways that we can bring in. That more diverse candidate pool that we talked about. Have you all asked him for any ideas or suggestions with that?
If I could turn my computer without dropping it, I would show you the whiteboard in my office, which is where Jody, Ken and I sat yesterday. And mapped out our priorities for recruitment. Um, for next year, which include deepening relationships with professional networks, other groups. More robust referral campaigns, using social media effectively, posting in new and different places nationally. So. The three of us have been working very closely, um, to figure out like, hey, it's July 1 tomorrow. What's the plan for how we do this for all positions, um, moving forward? So the short answer is yes.
Thank you. That's what I wonder. Great.
I've also asked Ken, um, besides several other people, uh, just on their own. What their perception of certain candidates were. Um, and Ken provides a perspective that I don't have. And, um. It's nice to have somebody who gives me a different lens, uh, in which to. Um, compare and contrast different candidates. So. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's been different this year. Um. Having him as not only a resource, but also someone who sits in with, uh, parents or sits in with the administration. Uh, because not only is he watching and listening to the candidate, he's watching other people.
Okay, thank you.
Did, were there any additional questions from? Any board members about the personnel report?
I just have one more thing, Dan.
Okay.
Can I? Um, I just wanted to publicly say that, uh, the candidates that we're putting in the, the, um. Oh, what's, what is it? The, um, secondary director, the Centennial High School and the elementary director. Uh, those people are highly qualified and I totally understand them being those positions. And I want to make sure those people know and understand. That I fully support them. But again, my frustration is the, um. Within, we got a presentation, uh, a couple of weeks ago about the hiring process for administrators. And it just appears to be a lot of shortcuts and, and few people involved in the, uh, actual interviews as far as candidates. And, um, not all stakeholders get to see more than one candidate. And whether that is right or wrong, I think it's wrong. And I think that people in, you know, the stakeholder groups. Um, are going to get to the point where they don't want to be a part of those if they know there's only one candidate in the candidate pool for interviewing. So I guess I just want to be on record for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, if there are no more questions, um, we will vote on the motion to approve and accept the consent agenda item. Um, all in favor?
Yes.
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 No. If you gave everyone a chance. Okay, um, opposed? Jim, that was you?
Yep.
Okay. That's everybody. Thank you. Um, next items, this was mainly a personnel special meeting, but I don't have anything under information only, old business, new business. Um. Board member reports. I guess, is there any thing anybody has to? We do still have a regular meeting on Monday, the sixth, so. Um, Bruce, did you have anything before we wrap up?
I have nothing.
All right, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I can.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you all for doing this offsite meeting. Uh, we appreciate it. Um, have a good night and we'll see you all on Monday.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.